Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, really glad you're here today.
We are. We're also really excited to have Julie and Colin with us. Hey guys.
Hi, everyone.
How you doing everybody?
So we want to take a minute and welcome you guys. We are really excited to have you here today. We've got some really fun stuff to share with you this week and next week are totally focused on our brand new email builder. And today you're going to get a full look at it, all of the things that it does, all of these awesome. Like Greg has added even more like functions and cool stuff to it since we talked about it briefly last week. Surely there's more to come where that comes from, as you guys may know for being around here. By the way, if you don't know us, we are Get Oiling and we are by and for brand partners. Everything that you need outside of the virtual office, right? So if you want to send email, which we'll be talking about in detail today, but if you want to send texts, if you want to have a private member area for your customers outside of Facebook, if you want to host events, if you need Zoom for your business, it's all included right here in one place for one price. And today we're going to be showing you how you can get rid of yet another service like Flowdesk, for instance. I'm going to talk a little bit about why brand partners should not be using that platform period here in just a bit as well. But welcome, we're excited to have you here. We are a platform that is built for you if you have a young living business. And if you do anything adjacent to a young living business, like if you are a practitioner or you offer services, coaching, things like this, you can keep all of that housed in one place with Get Oiling as well. So excited to have you here. If you're new here, welcome. If you're returning, we love you, you know, we do. And we look forward to sharing more of this tool with you. So we're going to go ahead and hop out a video here real quick. We'll come back to join you after we get through today's training content. We also have some support requests that came through as well. Got a couple of folks who signed up for that. So we will be talking about a lot here today. So let's go ahead and get into it. If you guys have been around Get Oiling for any amount of time, you know that for the longest time, we have had a powerful email editor, right? Which looks very similar to what it looks like to edit text for a blog post, or even for a text section on your website. It's a straightforward builder and it's a straightforward feature, this email editor. And it works really well because some of the best converting ways to send email are simple, right? Things that look like your coworker from down the hall or a few cubicles over shot you an email. Those things are very easily delivered. But we have had requests, many requests over the years to provide a prettier way to send emails. And guys, Greg did it again. So today we're going to be talking about the Get Oiling email builder and how you can start making emails and sending emails that look like your brand. So today we're going to talk about the two ways that you can send emails from Get Oiling. Cause we did not get rid of our classic email editor. It is still a very important tool that you should still be using. We'll be talking about that today. We're also going to talk about this email addresses and from names. This is a new thing that you might not be familiar with and it's a pretty cool and powerful thing to make use of. We're going to talk about preview text, which is another new feature that comes with this builder and how you can use it to boost your open rates with your emails. We're going to talk about creating and saving templates and sections for faster sending. Really important, real quick at the top here, if you're very interested in creating beautiful designs and you want to follow along with creating some beautiful designs, next week's training is going to be dedicated to design. So be sure to be here for that. And of course, we'll talk about best practices. Because at the end of the day, you can make your emails pretty, but it's important that they could land in the right place and that they get read, right? So we're going to talk about some best practices for that today as well. And as always, we'll get into live help and Q and A. So if you have questions, please do go ahead and add those to the Q and A here on the call. We've got three of the smartest people I know here at the ready to answer your questions. And if you would like to join us for next week's call and you're watching this as a replay, be sure you're on our list, getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. These are free to anyone who is a young living brand partner who's out there in the world wanting to learn how to work smarter. You can invite your team to these calls. We are here to help. All right. Now, if you, like several people who signed up today, would like some help on a call like this one, we do dedicate the second half of these calls for that purpose. You can go to getoiling.com/webstatereview for that help. And if you would like a hand getting things done, if you want to hand off your work, you don't want to DIY it, you can go to getoiling.com/concierge and hire someone from our team to do a beautiful job for you. All right. So our drag and drop email builder is here. Raise your hand or let me know in the chat if you have already started playing around with this drag and drop email builder. Have you started making cool stuff? How cool is it? Isn't it exciting? I love this thing, you guys. All right. So this new email builder is now the default email sender in Get Oiling. But you can still use the other pre-existing one that we had that you may be familiar with. So that classic email editor is available via a link below the templates list. So let's just say I'm going to pop over here to Get Oiling real quick. I will be going back and forth throughout here, but just real quick, if I wanted to send an email out to my, oh, this is not the account I want to be in. Bear with me just a moment. Let me log in Jane. And there we go. So I want to send an email to my newsletter, to my newsletter list. I'm going to click write email and it's immediately going to bring me here to all of these templates that I either made or that already exist inside of your Get Oiling email templates. So you can also click right here where it says, or click here to use the basic email editor. When I do that, this should look very familiar to you, right? Another way that you might see this come up is if you are maybe creating a new campaign or you are editing a campaign that you have, I can go in here, open this up. And actually this one was created without the email builder, but you actually do have a way to edit this in the email builder. And this would convert it over to this new format, right? So you do have multiple options here in terms of how you interact with sending email, but both options are still available for you. So the builder, which we're going to be focusing on here today, that's our new exciting, awesome feature that allows you to get rid of expensive third-party tools like Flowdesk or MailChimp. This is going to allow for more visual block-based design where that editor is more text-focused. So if you just want to send off a quick email, super basic quick email, it doesn't need newsletter formatting, right? If you want to say, hey, real quick, our call is coming up at the top of the hour, click here to join, right? You don't need to necessarily build that in a builder. Now you can, and there are streamlined ways to do this that we can talk about next week. If you want to make sure that every email is dialed in and cute, which is again, not necessary. But if that's what you want, we'll do that next week. But you have both of these options available. All right. Now let's talk really quickly about this email addresses and from names. This is a really cool thing that I'm really excited that we have. Because when you look at who is sending you stuff in your email inbox, the name that's there is one that can cause you to open or it can cause you to keep scrolling, right? So Get Oiling is a business, you are a business and you send things on a regular basis. If it's something that you're used to seeing, the likelihood that you will just continue scrolling past it, because it looks exactly the same is higher than if you create a little bit of a pattern interruption. And I'm going to show you how you can do this here in just a bit. But first and most importantly, you can send from multiple email addresses now using Get Oiling from your domain. So you can choose how your name appears in the inbox. So this would be from Jane or Coach Jane or your friend Jane. So it doesn't just have your name, you can change things up. You could say Jane from my business name or something like that. And here you can use different addresses or names for different audiences, like for your clients and for your leads, right? So if you want to communicate a little differently based on the email address that you're using, you can do that there. So let me show you actually, when we are in our email templates, I'm going to go and maybe create a new one. And I'm going to use this minimalist one. Under settings here, you can see the overall settings for this entire email. You can see that I've got a list here. I've got Coach Jane and I've got your wellness coach. They're actually all coming from the same email address. But if I choose for when I send this type of email, that it's coming from your wellness coach, that is going to again, create a pattern interruption, right? Even though I'm still sending from the same address, it's really cool. So I can click my emails right here, which by the way, you can also access my emails under your account setting, under my email addresses. But here you can actually click here and go add address. And you can of course, put in the email address and the from name that you want. And you will be prompted to confirm that email address. So you'll receive at that address, you'll receive an email that you need to click a link on to actually come back and confirm it here, which is pretty quick and simple. Oh Greg, thank you for that quick tip. Let's look at this. You can double-click just this background area and it'll take you to this overall settings for the entire message. Yeah, really excited to get into like just sort of all the ins and outs of that here today, especially next week where we do the design stuff. So another really cool feature that's available when you're sending an email is preview text. So this is something that shows up next to your subject line in the inbox. And you may have noticed this from people that you're subscribed to. Sometimes you'll see it's just the name. If you're using an AI tool in your inbox, this is definitely the case on Apple Silicon devices. That's a pretty built-in cool thing that you can use. And it'll provide an AI summary, but if that's not there, then you'll either see the very first few words or the first sentence that was composed in that email, or it can show this preview text, which is cool. Now this feature is only available in the new email builder and it's going to help you to boost your open rates when you're being intentional about how you use it. So real quick, let me show you where that shows up. It's actually not here in our templates, right? Your templates are where you lock in your design, how you want it to look. But then you use these templates to actually send the emails that you want to send. So if I go here and I want to again, maybe send a broadcast to my newsletter list, I can go here to send a message. I'm going to find my newsletter people. And I'm going to write an email and I'm going to use whatever my newsletter one is. So I'm going to maybe choose this one for my newsletter. And you can see here, we can put our subject line in and we can put in preview text, right? So your subject line should always of course, speak to whatever it is that the email is about and why you would be sending it. But this is an opportunity to provide maybe a little bit of a compelling reason or a little bit more context that would help the person understand why they should open that and read it right now, right? Kind of similar to like a meta description that you would use on a webpage or a blog post. This provides a little bit more context and helps people see the value of opening and reading what's in the email. All right. So templates, we have built-in templates and there are going to be more coming. In particular, I think I'm going to have some complimentary to the ones that are already there for other purposes before our design training next week. So let's talk about creating and using templates in your Get Oiling system using this email builder. So these now live in your content library and that's the same place you're going to find your images, your files, your videos, your saved replies, right? So all of the stuff that you use that can be put into other places in your system, those are all in your content library menu. And what we do here is we're going to be creating templates for our most common use cases, like a weekly newsletter or emails for a specific funnel, or maybe emails that you might send to customers would look different from emails that you send to leads, right? And then you can save sections of these templates as well. Or maybe an email that you're working on, if you really like what you just did in an email that you made on the fly, you can save part of that really quickly and easily from that same screen to use later, just like you use saved replies. So really quickly, if you're familiar with our saved replies, this is a feature that you can plug in to a lot of places, including our basic email editor, that really simple one that you can still use, right? Those saved replies also work everywhere our editor is in your system. So that means you can still use saved replies for emails, blog posts, class lessons, right? Lots of places you can pop in saved replies. But what we want you to make sure that you understand here today is that there's a new feature in Get Oiling that works specifically with the email builder, right? And those are these saved sections. So it works very similarly. So if you have been using saved replies to plug information into emails or drop things into lessons or drop copy and images or whatever design into blog post, et cetera, you can do that now with sections in your email builder. So if you are a saved replies user and you're using the email builder, sections are your new bestie, okay? And again, I'm going to show you this today. We're going to get into detail about strategy and design and how to use it on next week's call. So let's talk really quickly about a suggested workflow and some best practices before we go and play around with this really cool builder. So first things first, and again, get into this with more depth next week. I want you to start with two to four standard templates for your common email needs, right? So that's going to be like your newsletter, a reminder, maybe something that's for your events, maybe something else that's for again, like your customer newsletter, something like that, right? And you want to still, even though you can make these pretty, you want to make sure that your designs are still simple. Because at the end of the day, we aren't doing this so that we look a certain way. We are doing all of this so that people get emails, they receive them, they open them, they read them, they act on them, right? So it's really important that we keep this less is more philosophy if we want to be effective. And where we're using images, we're going to always use alternate text. I'll show you what that looks like in a moment. Really critical, if you're going to be sending a bunch of emails or sorry, a bunch of images inside of an email, not everybody, particularly on phones, is going to see those images load immediately, right? Or at all in some cases. And so if you send something that's just basically made up of a bunch of images from Canva, then that person's not going to see what you said, right? And you can, of course, again, if you're not ready, if you want to wait until we have the design training next week, you can still use the same text-focused email editor that we've always had. If you're not ready to wade into the design waters just yet. And just remember that design should support your message, not distract from it. Now, one more thing, I want to make sure you guys really understand, and this is just so important, right? Really, really, really important. I want to, I want to break this down for you. I know that a lot of people who use Get Oiling like to have dialed in pretty emails. A lot of people who promote young living like to have a dialed in presence in terms of how they show up, making things look nice. And that has led quite a number of people to go and use platforms like Flowdesk and MailChimp. And this is really, really important for you to understand. And something that I think really distinguishes Get Oiling from everything else that's out there. Most of these platforms where you're capable of sending bulk email are not friendly. Read their policies and procedures. They are not friendly to network marketing. Now, a few years back, I don't know if they got some pushback because our community came to them or what. But Flowdesk made a couple of little tweaks to what their policies and procedures are. And again, if you go back and you read them with a legal eye, you still are not protected as a network marketer sending content. They prohibit certain kinds of content. They don't go into detail as to what that is or what that means. You need to be building your business in a place that gets you and that supports you. And maybe ideally is actually on board with what it is that you're doing. And that's what we've created here with Get Oiling. This is just as true for you putting your customer-serving groups on Facebook and other platforms that will readily censor you and the things that you have to say, making assumptions about your intentions and what it is that you're here to do with Get Oiling. You are protected. You have everything you need in one place and we get you, we get your business. All right. So now that we got that out of the way, please let your friends know who are using Flowdesk that they've got exactly what they need. And by the way, what Flowdesk charges for their basic plan is basically what Get Oiling charges for their basic plan. And do you know what you get with a Good Oiling basic plan? You get your website, you can send emails, texts, you get a member area, you could sell stuff, you could have, guys, you have everything in one place that you would spend a thousand dollars a month for if you went and just picked the individual things that you could use, right? So why put yourself in a risky place when you could have for the same price, everything? And people who are here to serve you, who get your business, who love what you do, because we do it too, right? All right. End of that, let's go get into this builder. Who wants to see this? I'm so excited about this thing, you guys. All right. Yeah, that's right. You can't see who opened your email in Flowdesk. Do you know why? Cause they don't have a CRM. You have to go buy a separate CRM, right? You don't have a contact manager in Flowdesk. You don't have, I mean, you could pay more for one of their plans that takes payments and landing pages, but now you're paying even more. And again, they aren't network marketing friendly, right? So anyway, let's get back to this. So let's just say, for instance, I would like to begin by creating a template. And that is what I recommend that you do first is to create a template. Now here's one that I have here, but I'm actually going to start with a new one. And the cool thing is you're going to see nothing on this page when you get started. And that's because email templates here are going to be yours, ones that you've made that you use, okay? So what I'm going to do is I'm going to click add so that I can create something new. Now we already do have templates built in for you to use. And these are all available to you, the images that are used in particular, like this graphic gray, soft floral, leaf and minimalist. All of the Canva images that are included here are actually included with the template. So if we wanted to go look at this leaf one, for instance, you can click up here where it says Canva template and you can get all of the images and variations of these images that you can use to create your own right here, right in this template. So let's, let's actually go ahead and use this as our starting point. And I will show you guys how all of this works, right? So you have here, and really quickly, actually before I do that, getting ahead of myself here. Important if you click add here and you don't want any of these and you want to start from blank, you can do this, but you could also just hit this little X right here, right? And it's going to insert a signature that you already have. It's going to have a text block that you can start a sort of like start working from. You can add notes here for yourself. This will show up for you when you use this template later to send an email or to create an email for a campaign, okay? So what I can do is I can just start dragging elements in here. There's my title section will go there. I'll put maybe an image underneath it. I've got a text section here already. But let me just go ahead and I'm just going to get rid of all of this, right? I'm going to go ahead and drag in, I'm going to design the layout for the email that I want. I've got a title, I've got a photo, I'm going to want to have some text. And maybe I will use another block as a button for a call to action. Maybe I want to add some more text in after that. Maybe I want to put in a signature and I want to put in social links. And maybe here as well, I want to put in a divider, okay? So I've just built a sort of template for myself and I can go in and make all kinds of changes. Now, starting with color and how this shows up, there's a lot that you can do. If you double-click, like Greg said, this background, it'll take you to the overall settings. So make sure if you're wanting to decide sort of the margins and the lines of this overall, the background colors, you're going to want to be in what's called overall settings. Cause if you're in an individual section, it's settings, like this one that says block settings. Do you see how that changed when I selected this? You want to make sure that you're clear on where you are. So I'm going to work on the background first. So I double-clicked on the back so I could see overall settings. I want to send this from Coach Jane and I want my email background color to be slightly different than the primary white background. So I'm going to go right here and just give it this light gray and that just gives it a tiny bit of pop and lift when I'm sending it out. You can even see what that looks like in this mobile preview here. And you can actually check how things are going the entire time that you're playing around with this. And the really cool thing is too, is that once you get these made the way you want them, you can actually save them using this feature right here where it says add this block to my saved sections, okay? So I'm going to go ahead and say, I'm going to put my newsletter title here. And just like you can in our regular editor, you can use write with AI to insert copy. You can bold, you can change the color. And of course, if you're brand coloring and everything is already included setup in your Good Oiling system, then this is very easy to just grab and use. I can make sure perhaps that this top section, you know what I'm going to do? Here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to make, so that's my email background color, my message body background color. I'm going to make this blue. I like that. I am going to also change my default font color to white because it needs to show up on that blue. And then this border, maybe I'm going to give this like little orangey border, okay? I'm going to go and remember, this is not the design training. We're doing that next week, just showing you what it can do. So we've got our title here. We've got an opportunity to add a photo here. Now, I do have, and again, this is kind of the benefit of using the templates that we've created for you. There are some Canva templates that have the right width and everything that you would want to consider using. But I'm going to go ahead and edit this photo. I'm going to click replace. I'm going to see if I can use the Canva button here and go to, I'm going to do a default or sorry, an image size with the width of 600 pixels by 400 pixels. 600, just so you guys know, if you want to file that away in your brain, 600 is a solid width for an email. It's a good width for an email. So I'm going to go over here and find an image that I might use for all of my future, for all of my future headers for this particular type of newsletter. From elements here, I can go over to photos and in photos I can search for, I'll say forest. There we go. I'll use that. I will set it as the background. And maybe I use this instead as the title of my, of my newsletter. I'm going to change the color of this to white and I'm going to give it a newsletter tighter title. And I'm maybe going to take this transparency down and then make this text a different color perhaps. Anyway, again, this is not a design training, but you guys can kind of see where I'm going with this. I am going to send that to Get Oiling. And yes, Jackie, that's right. You can make the border bigger. So if you want that border to be a little less subtle, I'm going to delete this block up here. I'm going to also for the settings for this block, let me see. I'm going to go to my overall settings. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to reduce all of the padding. Do you see how now this image meets the edge? I really like that. I'm personally partial to that. But you can include more padding or we could go up to our border and give our border width a little bit more space, right? So we could do that as well. I again, really important, I just uploaded an image. You must do this when you upload an image. Go here to alternative text and it needs to say whatever the image is, because if it doesn't load, the person needs to know what it is. So here I'm going to name this newsletter. You're going to have a better title for your newsletter. Mine is called newsletter title. Now in these different sections, we can, we can say whatever it is that we want to say, just like we would in any other instance, right? And then this is a button section, remember that I drug in. I can click to edit this and you can put your link in over here. You can choose a destination from a page on your website. Or you can choose of course, the link that you want it to go to, if you want to send them somewhere directly. You can change the button label. Of course here, this would be maybe read the blog. And then you would put a link to your blog post. You can change your colors here. These are all preset in your system. We'll get into this in greater detail next week. Hopefully your brand colors are congruent. These are not. But looking at our sections here, you have, here's a divider. Here you can change the, the style of the divider. We can make this dashed. We can make it larger, right? You can change the color of this. And if, let's just say, I really like this, I can click here and say, add this block to my saved section. So I can use it over and over. I'm going to call this green divider and save it. And once this is saved, it's going to be available for me to use whenever I want to use it, all right? So I'm going to get out of this very not attractive email that I'm building for you here and actually show you an example of one that I created that is your weekly wellness tips that we provide you every, every month, we give you an email per week, right? So this is an example of something that you can do with it. I've actually added in, so here is one of the tips that we provide or an opener. But then I've inserted a title here that should say from the blog. Let's see if I did that. Yep, it says from the blog. And here I have added in a section where I can maybe put in the image for the blog post that's coming up, a link to the post itself. I've got my divider here. I can even put in events, right? So here is one coming soon. This is one that I'm using for upcoming events. Here I could put it, whatever the image is that I use for my event and Get Oiling and put a link to it here. So there's a lot that you can do with this. You have a lot of control over how this works. And where we have provided for you, a, let me come out of here real quick. Where we have provided any image heavy options, like let's say the soft floral one that we've created. These are Canva images, like this one here, this one here, all of these are provided here at the top, right? So this is really just as simple as creating the image that you want to see. And then of course, you can go in and, and do whatever you would like with that in Canva, upload it here into Get Oiling. But let's take a look at what it looks like to actually maybe just create a section that looks how you want it to look. So let's try an image here. I'm going to see if I can find an image that we can use here. We have a new feature in the image editor. I'm going to pop this one in and I'm going to go here to edit. I don't think this is actually it though. Greg, is this where we're doing those, like the crop features or do we do that somewhere else?
There is another tool. So yeah, cancel out of there. I mean, there is a crop in there too. If you click on the image and then the actual image itself, is it under replaced there? Yeah, there you go.
Got you. So.
Oh yeah, okay. There might be, yeah, I might probably need to add that button in there.
All right. Don't worry, you guys. We're going to be getting into some really exciting, like transforming images and their shapes. Don't worry you guys, we're going to be getting into some really exciting, like transforming images and their shapes. Uh, and all of the sort of design stuff that you're going to want to do, uh, in, in our next call. It may be too potentially, cause that's like a background image. Would it behave differently based on the section Greg? Like if I wanted to like put an image.
It should show up there. Yeah.
Yeah. So if I wanted to put it inside of a section, there it is.
There it is.
Yeah. All right. So the trick to this is you're going to be using a text block and adding an image to it. Guys, check this out. Add frame to image. What if I want to give it a shape? It's so cool. Look at that. All right. So I am going to, uh, maybe select this one here. And it's going to transform the shape of this image. Check this out. Look at that. It just cropped it into that shape. How cool is that? And then in this setting, uh, the settings here, I could also adjust, uh, the padding, uh, for this. Um, you can choose, uh, to cover the entire section or fit it inside. Uh, you can add a border width to it. Of course colors again, and that's for this individual section. So guys, if you've spent any time in our page builder, um, and, and you know how you can really dial in how sections behave, you can do that in email too. It's really cool. Check that out. And now, once this is here, uh, if you go to your, uh, your library, that cropped image that we took there and modified this one here. This new version of it is now available for you to use elsewhere in your system, which is pretty, pretty cool. Right? Uh, so I want to actually come back and show you guys a couple of things, uh, where these specific blocks are concerned. So like this, for instance, down here, this is a custom section. We do have a social media section where for every link that you put in, it's going to populate, um, an icon for that. So if you have all of these different platforms and you want to link all of them, they will show up here and that is super cool. Right? Uh, but if you, again, if you are somebody that wants to really dial in the branding, then you may choose to create a custom section using a, um, using some icons that you can get off of Canva and then uploading them here to a section. What I would do then in that case is create these, these are obviously all each images. And I'll get into more of this next, uh, next week, but you'll link these. Obviously give them alternative texts like Facebook. There you go. And then, once you have it set up exactly how you want it, you add this block to your saved sections. And everything that is a saved section, which you can see here is here and ready to go. So I can actually go ahead and save this. So after I've done the work to create this, I can just use it in every email that I want to use it in moving forward. Right? So I'm going to go add it to my saved sections. And this is, uh, social icons, uh, taupe. I know that's not actually taupe. It's more of a green color, but I'm just going to give it that. I'll click save section. I'm going to give it a moment and it will then show up in this list right over here. All right. Let me see, uh, get into the Q and A here. Um, and see if we can answer any questions as we're moving forward. Angelita says, how do I just send an email without using the templates? I've been trying to write an email. Yeah. So, um, that was something that I'm not sure if you saw that when I demoed that at the top of the call. By the way, there's that green divider and the taupe icons that you can just like drop in. Look at that. So cool. Um, all right. So just a quick recap. If you want to send an email out, uh, Angelita, if you go to your dashboard and you just want to send an email, right? You click here, you send a message, you choose your audience, you write the email, right? And then you see that there are all these template options. Just go right down here where it says, click here to use the basic email editor. And it's going to do exactly what it would have done in the past. Uh, and again, if you wanted to create a campaign message, you just want to write something that goes out in a campaign. You create your campaign, you add your first message, you go edit email. And here, um, actually hold on. Let me exit from here. You click this little guy. It says edit email. There's an arrow. Edit in email builder. That's the block one that we're talking about here today. Edit in basic email editor. That's the one you're familiar with. Right? So that just opens this up. Okay. So just look for when you're sending from your dashboard. Always look for use a basic email editor. If you just want to send something simple. All right. Paula says, can we save several sections together to insert into another template? At this time, no, I would love that personally. Uh, but, uh, but for now you could just save those as those individual sections. Um, another option would be to just go ahead and create the entire template that you want uh, and use that for each purpose that you have, just kind of depending on how frequently you would be needing to use those together. It might basically create a use case for you, creating a version of, uh, a template for yourself that includes all of those things. But I, that's, that's a wish list, I would say. Uh, it's like, can we, um, can we connect sections together and save them as sort of, you know, bundled sections for sure? Okay. Allison says, why is my signature section look different? I added a background different than my other sections. Is that because my other section images? Sections or images from Canva? Yeah. If, if you're, your images are coming from Canva and they take up sections and they look different from the signature section that you have. The signature section in your template, uh, or your email that you are composing using the editor, um, it's going to show up based on what the presets for that particular email are. So like this one, for instance, if I go to the overall settings, the message body background looks like this. If I wanted to add a signature, it's going to keep the same background color section as the entire email. So it may be if you've got Canva images that have a particular background color, you just want to maybe change the background color of that section to be the same as the others. So as an example, this one right here, this where it says, drop me a line. This is a Canva image and I have made sure that the rest of the email has that same, uh, background color as that Canva image. All right. Donna says, I stopped using images, et cetera, based on another training. Will these templates still yield high deliverability? That is an excellent question. You can absolutely still get high deliverability if you keep the number of images on the lower side and you are clearly providing a higher ratio of, uh, of content to image, right? And absolutely make sure that you are, um, using the alternate text on these images. The, the more formatted and the more heavily image focused your emails are, yes, the more likely it is that you are going to wind up in the promotions folder. That's why we have been a proponent of using our basic email editor for a great majority of purposes. Right? Um, this really is for you. If you are the type of person that feels like you absolutely need to have something that looks beautiful. Right? Uh, and that looks a particular way. You can have that and there is, I think, a healthy middle ground. Next week, we're going to be talking about what it looks like to, uh, visit optimization and sort of evaluate your design. Uh, so you can use mail tester, uh, which we'll be talking about in more detail next week, where we can actually send out a test of our template to make sure that it does have sort of the optimal setup for good deliverability. Thank you for asking that. That is a really important thing for everybody to know. Uh, pretty does not necessarily mean practical. Uh, and it doesn't necessarily mean deliverable in the way that you want to be delivered. So yeah, like that you can do stuff, doesn't mean that you should always. All right. How do we add things to our library? Where do we, uh, get the pictures to show and how to save it? Yeah. So every time you upload an image and I can actually show you the quick, quick way to find the library is to just try to swap an image that you have somewhere. Click browse and you can see everything that you've uploaded. Right? And if you want to actually manage this, you can go over here under content library and click on any of these and find everything that you have. So under images, if you've never uploaded anything, then there's not going to be anything here. Right? But one of the cool things that you have access to here because of what Greg has put into this editor is if you want to swap something out, uh, you also have free images from, uh, from Pixabay and you could put, uh, GIFs in here as well. So if you wanted to put in something that's animated, like, uh, I don't know, this little happy birthday guy, you could do that too. Uh, we could swap this out and maybe go to Pixabay and search for a forest and search. And you can add images this way as well. Right? And it's going to add it to your image library when you do that too. All right. Are people more likely to open prettier emails? So open rates are not generally impacted by, uh, the formatting of an email. Cause an, uh, an open rate is really going to be related very specifically to, um, your reputation. Right? So are you landing in the inbox and do they know who you are and want to open? Right? And then the subject line, why would they want to open? And that preview text, um, really giving them more of that context. Why would I want to open? So open rates are not necessarily the issue when you have a pretty email. If that's really about the expectations that you're setting with the person, uh, that you are, um, are sending these messages to, uh, as well as your send score. And, and that is something that we've talked about in other trainings, which really, uh, does kind of take into account. Uh, what are the percentage of people who are actually opening, reading, clicking, replying, uh, to the emails that you're sending? And that's going to tell an email service provider, uh, whether or not you are spam or whether or not your promotions, right? And what we really don't want to do, and that's kind of the risk of putting a lot of images into emails, uh, and, and over formatting emails, uh, is that you could see yourself wind up in the promotions folder. And we have talked about in recent email marketing trainings, about ways to mitigate that, like sharing a contact card, having them add you to their contacts, et cetera. Uh, there, there are ways to, to work around that. All right. Uh, so let me see if I got anything else here. All right. Sarah says, can you get an email template off of Canva and import it into get oiling? Or do you need to do it in parts and pieces? Uh, so because we are, so you want to think about different software platforms as effectively being different, uh, languages. Right? Uh, so something that is, uh, you know, written in Cantonese is not cleanly, uh, able to be, um, translated perfectly into English. Right? Uh, and so the software, the language that's used on the backend to create Canva is not the same language that's used on the backend to create stuff and get oiling. And so your best option is to bring over the pieces that you want and recreate them here. And really importantly, and this, this I think is really critical. Whatever you're exporting from Canva is going to be an image. And you don't want the majority of content in your email that you're sending out to be images. Right? Because for a lot of people, it's not even going to load for them. Right? People who, um, maybe have low data or they have settings on in their devices to not load images. Right? So they're just going to see whatever your alternate text is. So it's really important that, that there is written word in your emails, that, that there's a good amount of it too, especially in proportion to the number of images that you're using. So whatever images you want to use, you can put those in here, uh, of course. And, uh, and then of course you want to use the formatting features here inside of your, uh, your email builder to, uh, you know, to actually add the words. All right. Well, we eventually have a text option at the bottom, like we do on saved replies. Well, so this is being an email builder. There's really only one way to send texts. So, um, for campaigns, um, that option still remains Paula. So if we were to go to, uh, a campaign here, uh, and you wanted to have a campaign that was built on, let me find my, I think I have one in here that has that block format. There we go. Uh, so these are like the tip Tuesdays in block format. Right? Uh, and then you could put the text option down here. So this still remains on campaigns. When you're sending broadcasts, you would be sending email and text broadcasts separately anyway. Um, and then campaigns still have this option. It's just with the email editor that really is truly just about the emails. Uh, and I would keep your, um, uh, if you wanted to do saved replies, uh, for text, you could do that as well, because that feature is, is certainly still something that you could use, uh, for that purpose. All right. Uh, can you find out your own send score? Is that something on the backend? So your overall send score, like what they're reading as, that's not really something you have access to. It's kind of like an algorithmic thing. Uh, there are ways to improve that. We've had, we've done some training recently on that. Uh, but, uh, but what you can see, if you go to, uh, mail-tester.com and again, I'll get into this in more detail next week. Oh, I didn't type that correctly. If you go to mail tester, uh, it'll give you an email address that you can go make a contact in your good oiling. And then you can take that template and you can send it off to that, that address. And then it will actually provide you with a score when you come back here. So I'll just use this one as an example. And let me go find my, uh, my mail tester. Here's my mail tester. I'm going to go and swap out that email address that they just gave me and save it. I'm going to send them an email. I'm going to use this one. And this is, uh, testing the template. Here's a minimalist template test. I'm going to say done. I'm going to send that now. And then I can come back over here to check my score. And that one, despite having a few images is great. 10 out of 10. That's pretty awesome. So it likes me. A properly authenticated and you'll be able to see, right? If there's anything in here that's an issue, it's going to show up for you. So we'll be, again, we'll be talking about it in that, in a little bit more detail next week so that you can double check and make sure that whatever you're putting together is good and good to go. Let me see. Yeah. So for the content planning, so Allison, um, we're actually going to be doing, um, a holiday content planning coming up, uh, here in a couple of weeks. But the, the way that I would recommend doing that is, uh, is if we go over, this is all going to be happening in your email templates and in your saved sections. Which by the way, you can see the templates that you've saved for yourself and all of the sections that you've saved for yourself here. So just as an example, if you are using our, uh, done for you tip Tuesday content. And so you've downloaded, for instance, the October, uh, weekly wellness tips campaign. So I'm going to go type in October here. And we come over here to the block format version. Let me see if this one is, I've actually already changed all of these out, uh, cause this comes in green. Um, and, but I've, I've actually just gone in and really quickly changed them. So I'm going to go click to edit email. Basically what you're going to want to do is make sure that you have, uh, the images saved from Canva, uh, that you, um, that you want to use. Right? Uh, keep all of the stuff that we've sent you, swap out the images with your own. Right? So you can swap out the today's tip with the one that's in the color that you want. Obviously modify this one to your liking, make it your color, make this your color. Right? You just click these and you go and you change it. And your color presets will be here if you have, um, premium or higher, or if you have the branding package on basic. Uh, otherwise you can have, um, you know, just like a palette that, that you can draw from. You can actually just click here and go select it from somewhere else on your screen, using this little guy. But anyway, you can go in and, and let's just say, for instance, this one has today's tip. This one has how to use it, why we love it. Uh, I'm going to maybe add a section here that talks about my blog post. And again, I've created this before, so I can just drag this over and, uh, and, and put that right here. Right? And I can drag this over and put it right here. Right? Uh, and so you can have that and you're good to go. So, um, where the, where the, where the weekly wellness tips campaigns are concerned, it, for those of us who have really custom dialed in, like, okay, hear me out. And, um, we've got a couple of questions that I need to make sure that we get to here as well. And we will be doing design and I'll address this specifically next week on the design call. If you are someone who is really dialing in your brand and you don't want to have to edit every single one of those every single month, um, I am looking into options of creating like maybe a third resource bundle for you guys. That's just the sections that you can just claim and drop into your newsletter. Or just like a file that has all of the copy and then you can pop those things in. Right? So, um, that would make it easier for you to just go and, and drop that in. Uh, so we are looking into ways to do that as well. Um, but yeah, if you, if you have it already done, my recommendation would be, and I talk about this, by the way, this more of a momentum, thing for those of us who are in momentum, uh, glad to see you guys are getting into your content. Uh, one of the things that, that you can start doing in your, um, in your content planning is to actually kind of map out. Obviously, you know, month by month, here's all of the things that, uh, here's all my blog posts. Here are the events I'm promoting. And then you just create those sections. Right? And then you just drop that into the template and, and it's there and it's ready to go. And so, um, when we go in and, you know, as we're writing new content and new campaigns, which the, the new, we've got everything for the weekly wellness tips done through January. Um, as we start releasing new stuff, um, we can make sure that we have a dedicated, you know, here's just the text for you guys to just drop in if you wanted to do it that way. I can't promise that it would be formatted, right? With, with all of your links, you would still need to make sure that the links are there. With, with all of your links, you would still need to make sure that the links are there. And, and there still would be some setup. But the reason why we created the weekly wellness tips and have them set up the way that we do is because there are so many folks who do not care about any of the stuff that we just talked about that want to just be able to say, give me something that I can give to my people and I don't have to think about it, right? And that's why we have it set up the way that we do. Of course, kudos to you. If you want to DIY, you want to do your own thing, we want you to do that. But the way that we have it set up is really for people who just want an easy button. So yeah. Add the blog image and then the text block and the same for the upcoming events. That's right. Yeah, so you would just be creating, so Allison, imagine doing this, just real quick. Imagine doing this. I'm going to go pretend like I'm creating an email template. I'm not actually creating a real email template. I'm going to X out of here and just start from here. And I'm going to maybe use one that I've already used before. And I'm going to swap out the image. I'm going to name it whatever I want to name it, right? I'm going to, I'm going to put the link in here to that blog post. And so here, I'm going to add this block to my save sections. And this is going to be my October 6, 2025 blog post, save section. What do I do next? After I save this, I'm going to duplicate, right? And, and then I'm going to switch the image, change the copy, change the link, save this, October 13th, 2025 blog post. Right? And this is just, you do this for the month or for the quarter, what have you. And then you'll have all of these things in here. There it is. And you could just drop it right in to that week's newsletter. Same for events. You have a few of these to worry about. You're doing one per month. Go ahead and do all of them for the quarter. And then in every email that you send, you can drop in the section that includes that. And again, I am going to be getting into that next week. All right, Paula says, can we rearrange the sections, putting the ones we use most at the top? Oh, well, that, that's an interesting idea that we can definitely put into a wishlist, yeah, to be able to sort of like organization for sections because this is going to grow very quickly, I think, for a lot of us. All right, so there were a couple of folks who signed up for Work Reviews today. Thank you guys so much for your patience. Adrian, you had a question about changing out your, let me allow you to talk here. You wanted to change out your, your URL, right? For your, you wanted a different website address, right?
Yes, I'm in the process of rebranding. So Colin created the new website or the newer URL already. So right now it points to my current, the new one points to the current one. Eventually I want to get, I want to phase out the current one. So I want to know the steps I need to take care of. I understand, you know, there's a lot of links and things I need to do and all that and other things I'm going to change. You know, I'm going to, you know, change images and stuff like that, but I want to be able to.
Okay. So just as, as a rule, what I would recommend that you do, let me pull up your website real quick.
Sure.
One of, like for any page whose links you're going to keep as is, there is a code that you can go and put in to the fields that will basically make it such that when you change your, your domain, you will still want to go back through and comb through and make sure that everything is still correct. But if we go to your pages here and maybe we'll use your home one. All right, so where you have a link that's going somewhere, here's about me.
Right.
If we go here, instead of this Violet Petals Yoga,
Right.
you do these brackets, my underscore website bracket, just like this. So go into all of your URLs on pages that you're going to keep and make sure that where that Violet Petals Yoga is showing up, that you have my website, just like this. Make sure that this is in your saved replies too, anything that you would be reusing.
Okay, so if I do that now and then when I eventually have it switched, it'll automatically be done.
That's correct. Yeah, it would, it would keep those, those links correct without them breaking. Yeah, they, they would know, because right now they're going very specifically to Violet Petals Yoga. And if you change it to my underscore website, it's still going to go to Violet Petals Yoga. But when you change it to that balance with Adrian, it'll, it'll show the correct web address then as well.
Perfect. Oh, that makes it really easy.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, so I, I think I'll do that first and then have the websites reversed and then phase out the current website. So, excuse me, how long do you suggest that I keep the current website? You know, because people are going to still know me. And I have people from ages ago still know me as Violet Petals. It was just the name that I used. And that was one of the things I said, should I change? Should I not change for years, you know?
Yes. Well, the good news is, is that you can have multiple domains connected to Get Oiling. So you could still have a page on your website that is dedicated to Violet Petals Yoga.
Right.
Right? And, and so there's still a place for people to go. Because if you've got Violet Petals Yoga links out in the world, then you still want them to make it to your website, right? So even still having a page that, you know, talks about Violet Petals Yoga and then says, by the way, if you're interested in ABCD, come over here to this website and link them over to the new stuff. So that way you're, you're not losing any of the traffic that you could have generated from previous posts.
Got it. So you would think just keeping, keeping it or just eliminating it eventually?
You could, you could phase it out eventually. It really just, I don't know, I don't know how much of it you've put out there